Afternoon, council. I'd like to call this committee the whole meeting for March thirteenth, twenty twenty five to order with adoption of the agenda. So I want to make that motion for Councilwoman Dowling, Councilor Luthell, all in favor. Motion's carried. Thank you. Adoption of the minutes of the committee of hold February thirteenth. So I want to make that motion for me. Councilor Palmer, Councilor Orlando, all in favor. Motion's carried. Thank you. Any business arising from those minutes? Saying none, I'm going to move on to delegations and presentations. We have Tourism Rebelstoke here in East Hamilton.
That's me.
You're welcome to come up to the podium.
Okay.
Councilor Palmer has put the podium kind of where you can connect up and still be seen on Live.
Perfect. Right here?
Yep.
H M.
Here is Councilor Chair.
Here you guys.
Good. Thank you.
Just got one second to get this to Zen, your mode, if I can find my mouse. Doesn't seem to like that. Oh, there we go. Okay.
Awesome.
Awesome. Thanks for having me today. I have no big asks from you guys today, so you really guess to just sit back and listen. Hopefully, I'll keep this pretty brief. I just wanted to come and share one of the data sets that we've collected over the last year with you guys, so that you guys know it's a resource that we have in our community and that you guys can access it and kind of let you know what the results we saw were. So this is our Resident's Talk Tourism Survey. It was previously called the Resident Perception Survey back in twenty twenty-two, and this was ran by Tourism Rebelstoke. Really, back in twenty twenty-two, just helped inform our destination management plan. So a lot of the actions that came out of or that you see within the destination management plan came from the robust stakeholder engagement that Tourism Rebelstoke did with the community. This survey, we updated it this year in twenty twenty-four to align all of the questions that we asked with a larger tourism perception survey that the province is doing through Destination B C. And so we essentially, we kept a couple of the questions from twenty twenty-two because we wanted to be able to compare that year-on-year change, but some of the ones we did, we did change this year to align so that we could feed into that larger data set for the province as well. And in turn, they're going to be kicking out a report for us based on this data on top of the report that we've done as well, that compares this a bit more to the provincial data set, so that we can see where we stand there. These results are from May of twenty, May twenty-fifth of last year until the end of December. What we've decided to do is to keep this as an ongoing survey that's always open year-round, but we're only going to do a major campaign push every two years, just to kind of really get people back taking it. But we want to keep the data trickling in all the time and have that avenue for residents to be able to go and tell us about how tourism is doing and how they feel about it within the community. I think those are all the major updates. Did anyone by chance take this survey this year? Couple of you, so you guys are somewhat familiar with the questions that we're asking here, too. So that's awesome. I will say, I was pleasantly surprised by a lot of the questions that were asked in this or by the results that we saw. The first part, I'm going to go over just a bit of demographics, just so that you guys can see that there, I was pleasantly surprised at what a good spread we got in terms of financial incomes, in terms of renters versus owners, in terms of lots of different things. So that's kind of the first half of this presentation, and then in the second half, we'll talk a little bit more about how residents felt towards tourism. So when you, the very first question, when you go to take this survey, was how do you identify? Because we wanted to make sure we were able to do some cross-tab analysis on are you a second homeowner here? Are you a year-round resident? Are you a seasonal worker who's just here temporarily? Or are you a visitor? Because, you know, sometimes everyone trickles in. So the first question was just that, and we got about five hundred and seventy-one resident responses. We did it above and beyond that five hundred and seventy-one.
Yeah.
Emergency preparedness component.
Everly, yeah, a child missing.
So above and beyond that five hundred and seventy-one responded, responses, we actually did get fifty-eight visitors coming to the survey, but as soon as they hit that they were a visitor, they were kicked out of the survey and punted over to the visitor experience survey, just to make sure that this data is really specific to people who are identifying as somewhat of a resident of our community. So yeah, we got about seventy-seven percent was year-round residents, just a small percentage, four percent of part-time residents, so things we said were like second homeowners. And then seasonal residents comprised what eleven percent of who responded to this. Within those year-round residents, we asked how long you've lived here. And again, there is an interesting spread, biggest categories being kind of one to five years and then more than fifteen years. So we did actually manage to tap into that local revy base of people who've been here a long time. I think in total, if you were to look at like six-plus years, I think it's around sixty-four percent of people have been here six-plus years who responded. Of the part-time residents, so just those twenty-three respondents who said they were part-time residents and second homeowners, we asked them this specific question of how much time do you spend in Rebelstoke every year? It's always just a curious thing. I know I lived in Whistler, and lots of times the houses could go empty for the whole year, or maybe they were there for one, one week of the year. So it was interesting to note that actually, most of them identified, the majority of them identified as being here for more than six months, which is interesting. Three to six months was the next category, and then we really didn't have anyone who said they were here less than twenty-four weeks, which is a surprising one. Oh, I think I missed one. Seasonal residents, same thing. We asked, how long do you plan to stay in Rebelstoke if you're just here on a working holiday? Or, you know, are you looking to stay longer? Again, a lot of people are just here for a season, and that's great. They're on those working holidays. But we did see a significant number, twenty out of those sixty-seven responses were here for either more than a year, or they're looking to move here permanently, which was an interesting one. In terms of employment, we asked this question. You don't need to look at all the details of this, but we did ask, what sector are you, what sectors do you work within? And these were categories that were laid out by the province, so we just aligned with what they had. We added a couple extra categories, such as a homemaker, so like are you a stay-at-home mom, considering that, or parent of any sort, considering that as a role as well. And what we did see is by far, most people identified as working within tourism. There were, there wasn't other category, and there was a bit of a limitation on this one, because we didn't actually put a caveat whereby if you selected other, you had to specify. So we have gotten updated that, because, because we got so many in the other category, it was the second one, we weren't expecting that many people to select other. So we have since gone, gone through and rectified the survey to just make sure that if they click other now, they have to say, kind of, what, what do they consider that? But yeah, tourism being the biggest, then other, then we've got healthcare, social assistance, construction, and then education is being a top kind of industry for what people are employed in. One other thing I should note, I guess, how we, how we obtained this survey data as well, most of this was done through in-person interactions with our Stoke squad. We did put up posters around town as well at different venues, but we stayed, we stayed away from online channels. So we didn't promote this on Facebook or any social pages. The reason for that being that the Destination B C survey and best practices, they recommend staying away from anything like a Facebook community group, because it can really skew your results very quickly, especially with trolling and everything that's going on in the online space. So they really recommended that we keep this all offline. So all of these respondents were collected primarily through in-person interactions, and then people saw posters throughout town. Same thing. So housing, we asked this question, are you a property owner? Are you a renter? If you're a property owner, do you have tenants? Do you have long-term tenants? Do you have short-term tenants? Just to, again, kind of get a pulse check on this. So about half, there's a good split between half, a half of the respondents being a renter, and then half being property owners of some sort, majority of them having no tenants. And then, yeah, into that kind of, a bigger chunk having that long-term tenants, and short-term tenants really being a small portion of this. Now, granted, keeping in mind that perhaps we didn't reach a huge audience of second homeowners, because if they're not in town and they didn't see this, then they, we may not have got their feedback. So just one caveat there, but definitely some interesting insights in terms of how that's breaking down. So when we go to quality of life, this is one of the ones that we were able to compare against our twenty twenty-two survey results. And I, I expected this to go the other direction, if I'm being completely honest. I was really pleasantly surprised to see that it went up point six, point six, or zero point six points, which is impressive. When we asked, do you think the quality of, how would you rate the quality of life between one and ten, living in Rebelstoke? So it went from seven point five-five in twenty twenty-two to eight point one-five in twenty twenty-four. Same thing, looking at that trajectory. So people may say, yeah, I rate this at a ten right now, but I don't think we're getting better, or I think we're getting worse. That's something that we asked, we asked that question in twenty twenty-two. So do you think the quality of life is getting better, getting worse, or staying the same? And we did see the majority of respondents in twenty twenty-two saying, forty-eight percent saying we think it's getting worse, which for us is a big indicator. We need, we need to look at that and say, why do you think it's getting worse? What's getting worse about it? So I was very surprised when we saw that category shrink in twenty twenty-four. So we saw getting worse decrease by fourteen, nineteen percent. So only twenty-nine percent of people think it's getting worse now, with the majority of people actually feeling like the quality of life in Rebelstoke is getting better. So that's a really interesting indicator, I think, for everyone. I don't think, when people answer this question, I don't think they think of it specifically related to tourism. I think, they think of that as a holistic question about their community, and so we're one piece of that. But I think it's a good reflection to say we're trending in the right direction for the work that everyone's working on.
So is there any parameters as far as the question goes? Do you feel it's getting better because of, or just a general question?
Just right now, it's just a question. And then these questions, specific to tourism, is where we dive in to say, what's the analysis on this?
Right.
This gets a lot more robust. I didn't want to put all the questions on. I do have a QR code at the end that you can scan to be able to see the full report and all of the questions that were asked. I kind of synthesized these questions just because it's a lot.
True.
And it was quite robust, but yes, I do think that there could be potential there for putting in a open text box perhaps around, why do you think it's getting worse? Or what, what do you feel is getting worse about the community? I think that's a great suggestion. Yeah, so the, the next questions were specifically D B C question-related. These are ones directly out of their toolkit that we had to use, and it basically asked a series of questions and asked you to say, based on this, do you agree? Do you strongly agree? Do you disagree? And there was a whole slew of questions. Socioeconomic, economic, environmental, job and career impacts, and indigenous were the key, the main heading categories. So when we looked at that, when it came to anything related to socio-economic or economic, most of the responses trended more favorably. So there is a positive response, either strongly agree or agree that there were benefits there. Things like tourism adds, contributes to my community, or adds value, or brings jobs, it brings diversity, it brings all these different things. And these are all related to tourism. When it comes to environmental and career impacts, it was very much, the trend was more negative. So people don't feel that tourism is offering more competitive wages or career opportunities for growth and improvement. They don't feel that it is helping to protect our natural ecosystems and environment, or that it's doing better than other industries to reduce their carbon footprint. So things like that. So definitely two sides of the coin there. And then these were some additional questions that we decided to ask. They weren't mandatory questions, they weren't required, but we felt it was important to just kind of round out the survey to be a little bit more holistic and not quite as rigid as, as D B C's template. So yeah, we asked about feelings towards tourism, so that sentiment piece. We asked about the importance, importance of tourism for the economy, how do, how do, how do residents feel about that? Visitor tolerance and community sentiment, so how do people feel about visitors in their space? Do they like it? Do they not like it? And the importance of a couple different issues. So on this one, when it comes to feelings towards tourism, most people were pretty favorable. Tourism contributes positively to the quality of life in my community. Sixty-three percent either agree or strongly agree with that. And I value the contribution visitors to make to my local community. Again, sixty-four percent either agree or strongly agree with that. So in terms of that, that sentiment towards tourism, it's definitely trending more positive. When we asked people about the economic importance of tourism, so what percentage do you believe is, or how important is tourism to the following economies, Rebelstoke, B C, and Canada? Eighty-eight percent believe it's either somewhat or very important to Rebelstoke. Eighty-seven percent believe that for B C, and then eighty percent for Canada. So we do see that people do feel strongly that it's important for our economy. This one was an interesting one. So I feel positive about my encounters with visitors in my community. I was, I was really curious and again pleasantly surprised about this one, because sometimes I think you, the squeaky wheel gets the grease, and you hear the people who are really disgruntled and frustrated and upset. But actually, sixty, sixty-nine percent of people felt positive about their interactions with visitors within our community. This could definitely change over the coming months and years, especially with everything that's going on geopolitically. So it'll be interesting to compare this one in a couple of years, I think, as well. But yeah, definitely more people feel positive about their encounters with visitors.
And so if I could just stop.
Yeah.
When you're, when you're asking those questions, again, it's in general terms, but, you know, sometimes people speak, are they, you know, I'm happy about tourism because of, or I'm disgruntled because of?
Yeah. No, again, we don't have that follow-up question. This time around, we weren't sure how much analysis we'd be able to, anytime you do an open-ended question, the analysis is tenfold in terms of having to go through and, and synthesize those themes. So we didn't open that up, but like, again, I think that's a potential follow-up question to say, just have a quick, short answer in there in terms of why. I think that's a good feedback. This is a really interesting one. It's displayed a little bit differently on the report that we have on our website, but I tried to make it visible in one screen here, which is why I've changed the way I've done it. But essentially, this is a, it's a visitor, visitor tolerance. How, you know, do we have too few, just the right amount, or too many visitors in each of the following seasons? So there's no perfect answer on this one, right? Because you're never going to get everyone on the same page. Ideally, everyone's in yellow, and we've got just right across the board. The reality is, that's never going to happen, because everyone has a different perception and opinion. So then it comes down to, okay, well, the good thing is that in each category, some only marginally, but in each category, yellow does win out as the majority. So the majority of people do feel we have just the right amount in every season. Now, it gets close in winter and summer, where we're creeping up on people feeling like there's too many. And then spring and fall, we're seeing people think we have too few. And then again, you're balancing this against perceptions of people who work in tourism or people who own tourism-related businesses versus people who don't. And so it's, it's a very interesting one for us to kind of get a pulse check of like, are we going the right way? A lot of the stuff that we've done, like, for example, when it comes to events and events coming to our community, we don't actually try to support any events that are coming in our busy seasons, because we already have enough people. So we try to prioritize funding for events and things happening in these shoulder seasons so that we can really push more people to coming in spring and fall, which is what we're seeing from the surveys, that that's where people want more versus we have enough as it is. So this is just a really interesting one to, for us to get a pulse check. Obviously, if this was all red, we'd have issues, right? If everyone was saying we have too many all the time, that'd be an issue.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, it'd be, it'd be really interesting to know what is making people lean towards, you know, too many visitors in the wintertime, or too many visitors in the spring, especially as we look towards our growth in the future and looking at, you know, increasing the bed counts in town. How do we, how do we continue to balance the, you know, the, the drive for tourism with, with the needs of the community? So.
Yeah. Yeah, for sure. And like I said, I'm, I'm super open to suggestions and definitely working with different departments in terms of planning or engineering, in terms of how can this data help you guys with your guys' initiatives as well? Or is there something we can add to make this more robust, that would make this more valuable for your guys' planning as well? So yeah, it was just, just an interesting one. Issues range by importance. This one, I will say, is, we can't really compare to when we asked this two years ago, because when we asked this two years ago, we had a cat, a list of like fifteen different options.
Right.
And we condensed it just to be six options, just for this survey to see. It was just kind of a throw it up the wall, see what people think. The reality is, with all six of these, very important was off the chart in terms of what people, every single one ranked as very important, because we asked them to rank each one between one and five type of thing. And so I looked at just the very important category, because they were all such a huge majority to say, okay, how do these issues land? And it came out as emergency response planning being number one, housing shortages number two, climate change number three, undersized infrastructure number four, biodiversity loss five, and then invasive species six. So, but they all ranked as very important to people. So it's just, again, it's just more a pulse check of like, what do people care about? And then, yeah, for us, this is kind of coming to the end here, but we do really feel strongly that, that locals should be actively involved in decision-making when it comes to processes related to tourism development and, and management within our community. That's something we want to champion, and we want people to feel empowered to have a say. So this last question, it's not, it's not perfect, but it gives us a bit of a pulse check of how are we doing? So when we asked the question, residents are involved and play a role in influencing the planning and development of tourism in my community. Most people, there, you know, there was definitely neutral to agree or strongly agree is the majority, which is great. That means we're in the good. But there is still, you know, twenty-eight percent of people who feel that they disagree with that, or they strongly disagree. So that's, that to me, that's our opportunity for improvement of how do we work with those people. I did a bit of a cross-tab analysis to filter through and say, okay, just looking at people who responded that they disagree or strongly disagree to this. Is there once demographic that we're seeing that through? And, and to be honest, there wasn't. It was a, it was a good split of renters versus like owners who, who disagreed. There was a good split across the finances, so I didn't include that one, but there is a finance question in there between people who make under fifty K a year versus people who make over two fifty K a year. There was, there was still a split, so there wasn't any key outliers where it was like, specifically, this is the audience that we need to target to try and engage more. It was kind of across the board. So, but this is a good one for us to kind of keep our pulse check on in terms of how are we doing in terms of people feeling like they have resources, funding, support, an opportunity to say, an opportunity to get involved. So this is, for me, this is where I would like to work on seeing improvement in the future. And that's my whole spiel for the most part. We do have a lot of other resources on Destination Rebelstoke dot com. So we have resident data, the full report from this one, sorry. We have the M R D T and the O V P revenue on there, accommodation data, value of tourism, visitor experience survey. We are getting Environics data and Tellus data, the old Tellus data is also on there. I also did a biking in Rebelstoke survey last year. That was pretty engaging, and we got surprisingly a huge number of respondents to it. It was just kind of how do you feel about biking in Rebelstoke? Where can we improve? What would you like to see? Is this a priority? So I haven't synthesized those, but I'll probably try to launch those kind of around the Bike to Work Week in, end of May. And so those will be coming as well, and potentially all comes to that, but see. And that's everything. That's me. Any other questions?
Ms. Hamilton, thank you. I appreciate you doing this, and some of the questions are interesting. And as we move forward, being able to compare this in years, going forward will be advantageous, I think, for the community as a whole. Counsel, any questions from the summit?
Yeah.
So much a question. Just, it's nice to see the positive work, and it's clearly it's having an impact. That's really good. So I just wanted to say congratulations on that. And also to see you and all of the great Rebelstoke, but you're here and they're not.
Thank you.
Council.
Thank you. That's your chair. Yeah, thank you very much. Great to have the stats. I note, whenever this body, I think anybody, when they start seeing good stats, good information, then you want more and more. And so I think you're hearing that. At the same time, I'm sure you'll balance that when, when new surveys become too long and then people don't participate. So having this data as you have it here is better than having, asking for more but not actually getting the participants.
Yeah.
So the, on that, so with the open survey, and I'm trying to sort of understand on cycles of how residents would do that. So you, with the, every year, push every two years, you'll see hopefully the upswing. How does that, like, will there be controls on how many times a person, or do you want those kind of controls? So could I go on like every month and say, my opinion's changed?
Absolutely. Yeah. Yeah. We, there's no, we encourage people to take it. If they're, if they're, if they feel like their sentiments or their opinion has changed to previous, we encourage you to take it again. When we go to look at the data, like if, if we do a big push in two years, I'll probably compare twenty twenty-seven to twenty, no, twenty twenty-six to twenty twenty-four data, rather than doing like a two-year spread against the one-year spread, if that makes sense. We just, we're keeping it online so that we can internally see that each year coming in. We also wanted to keep it around to see if there was a change in sentiment based on when people took it. So if they take it in the winter versus if they take it in the summer versus the fall, does that change people's perception of those responses? So that's why we kind of have it as an ongoing one. But when it comes to actually comparative, we'll probably just do one year versus a previous year.
Good.
Yeah.
And then, second question to Mayor. So are an idea that might be good for when you do the next push, possibly doing it at the time of the utility billings or taxation? If there was an insert in the mailings, you might get a higher participation
Yeah, absolutely.
For residents at that time.
Yeah.
Thank you. Thank you so much for this.
Yeah. Yeah, no worries. And I, just to kind of pull on your question, too, when do surveys get too long? We had that here as well, because the questions from D B C are not the simplest questions. I don't, I don't love them, if I'm being completely honest. But one thing that was interesting, so we broke our survey out. So at the end of the required questions, which were previous to these questions, we said, do you want to keep going? If you wanted to keep going, you were entered into the draw twice. And so how that worked is that we actually, for the bulk of it, we had what, five hundred and seventy-two responses? But four hundred, you can't see this in the corner, four hundred and sixty-one responses actually ended up continuing on with the optional questions, which was great. I, I expected that to be quite a bit lower. And so, yeah, if you said, no, I don't want to keep going, your answers were submitted and you didn't see any of those remaining questions. So that was a really interesting one for us in terms of people, surprisingly, the majority of people were still willing to, to participate and keep going. So, and it was definitely a longer survey. So that was great. And then just, sorry, one other thing I forgot to know. On a couple of these, I had to make an edit to what the PDF is, just on this one, in terms of which age category do you fall within? And I think I might have skimmed over this actually as well. If you look at the PDF, I missed a category, so those numbers are all wrong. So just if like, look at the one on the Destination Rebelstoke website, it caught the actual numbers. But yeah, sorry, this was one other question, too. Again, just trying to look at that demographic spread to make sure we were getting everyone. When I compared this against the Stats Canada demographic trends, we're pretty similar in that the bulk of residents are between thirty-five and forty-four years old, which is great. One category I think we could do a little bit better in is maybe seniors, because I think we do still have a bigger, a larger senior population that then maybe is reflected in this. But overall, we've still got a balance of like younger people and older people and kind of middle-aged being the biggest demographic. Sorry.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Just to comment.
Yeah.
Mayor, so perhaps staff could update the agenda to reflect the, the correct.
Correct. Yeah, I can send through a new PDF. Sorry, I was going for it today. I caught it, and I was like, oh, no. I'm missing a whole category on there, and so the numbers were a little off. So.
Perfect.
Yeah.
If you could do that, that would be wonderful.
Absolutely.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Hamilton.
Thank you.
Coming here and sharing that.
Absolutely. And for anyone, both council and our staff, if anyone wants to do any deeper dives into like, what does specifically this category think? It's really easy for me to filter those. I can just do it in real time. So if you have any of that kind of cross-tab analysis where like, I want to see just what renters think, or I want to see just what second homeowners think, feel free to reach out to me at any point, because I can do that super quick and easy, way easier than you trying to go through raw data and figure that out. So just throwing that out there.
Thank you.
Awesome. Thanks, guys.
All right. We are going to move on to discussion papers. Mr. Black, we have an update on transit discussion.
I believe all of council, we see the PowerPoint presentation. Let's go over here real quick. And this should say twenty twenty-four, not twenty twenty-five. My apologies. Moving on. So there's a little bit of background. We did consolidate the two systems about this time, three years ago. We have every year gone to B C Transit and said, we want more, we want more, we want more. And the last time we did that was in September of twenty-three. We started operating the two systems together in December of twenty-three. And so we have two full years of information under our belts for that period of time. So the revenue, you can see is continuing to grow. Twenty twenty, end of COVID, twenty one COVID, and now we're seeing the trend continue to be up. And now we're seeing the trend continue to be up. It's going in the right direction as far as revenue goes. This is quite interesting to, to me. What this says is that in, uh, August and December is when most of the bus passes, season passes are sold. And so that is a good indicator that most of our, our revenue is coming from, uh, staff that are coming here for the winter season. Keep in mind also that, uh, the ticket prices decreased from four dollars to $2 years, or two years ago. And so had those numbers stayed up at $4 for a shuttle trip, the revenue would be slightly higher for our, uh, past couple of years. Ridership going in the right direction. The matter of fact is becoming so successful that we are seeing our fleet being overwhelmed at certain times of the day, especially in the morning. It's telling us that we are leaving people behind. And once you leave people behind, then they're less likely to get back on the bus and use the bus to get to their preferred location. So we are looking for some bigger fleet. Ridership by month, very telling, winter is our peak. Summer is spring, summer, fall relatively, uh, small ridership. Winter is our big season and the total there 120,000 riders a year. BC Transit Service, so that's under our annual operating agreement. This side of the equation, we are making every effort to keep our daily midday, day, eight to five consistent and not change it anymore so that our residents can effectively know when the bus is coming. So we're not changing it on our regular basis just to tweak it. We're now have it in a place where we're pretty solid on what the operating system should look like as a normal operating day. Now the winter is when we see those big fluctuations and so then we see the, how the shuttle is filling in for those services. Shuttle hours in the summer relatively low. Winter definitely is our peak season of transit system and the shuttle. Costs, net city costs, BC Transit, 170 grand. The O A, and I'm sorry, and that was 23, 24. Last year, 233 and actual sedator, 2, 250. The shuttle. Fairbox, uh, you can see their MRD, the various funding sources. And we did go over budget, however, we are into a, uh, a, uh, one more? Is there one more? But, oh my God. I'm so sorry. In, in this case, it says recoverable. And that's the point I wanted to make here is that our, our contract with shuttle, um, does have a clause in it that we would reconcile at the end of the year. So we're going through that reconciliation process right now. That cost should all be split with three parties, et cetera, et cetera. Mostly attributable to construction on Camosi and the extended route that we had to go to, to get to the mountain last summer. And, and, uh, general construction. That's it. Any questions? The bottom line here is that we are really tied intimately with operations of the mouth for success. And I think that's the real message here. In order to keep the funding and the growth of the system, we do need to have more fleet.
And so we talked about leaving passengers behind. So they're basically, you know, they're going to be picked up by the next bus at an inappropriate time. If we're not doing like the Mexican chicken bus where we're having them hang off the edges and that sort of thing. Because we have to follow rules here again.
And so what we've been doing is adding fleet when we're seeing these, uh, over, uh, over extensions of the buses. So when we are leaving folks, the operators then pulling in an extra bus to pick those people up. Because generally, starting at the hotels, anybody from Mackenzie going, uh, south is going to have, uh, another bus come by full. So we then, uh, we start then putting in the bus in the service at Mackenzie so that we can continue to sweep up towards the mountain. The same thing in the afternoons when the fleet gets full, we'll add another bus into that system to bring in or bring down those folks from the mountain at the same time.
Oh, perfect.
Bigger fleet, bigger fleet will address many of these things.
Counselor's turn.
Yeah, thank you. Through the chair to director back. When we're, when we're talking about bigger fleet, are we talking about like an increasing capacity of bus sizes? So, you know, jumping from a 25 foot or a 25 passenger bus to say perhaps a 35 or a 40? Or are we talking about like increasing the fleet as to increasing the amount of vehicles going through that route? So we have less people waiting for the pickup buses? And then maybe a follow-up question to that or an additional question to that would be, when we're leaving people behind, how long are they having to wait, um, for that second vehicle to, to come by and pick them up?
Um, I don't have averages of the delay that's required for that to happen. Typically, we're getting noticed by call. You know, people are being left behind or the drivers will call in and let the operator know, I'm full. I'm at the hotels, not going to work. We need to bring some more fleet in. The solution is full-size coaches.
Okay.
We're operating the small, very small BC Transit buses and the, the 20, 25 passenger, um, buses right now. We need the full-size coaches in order for this to be successful. And with newer equipment, the operating cost should be generally the same because we are operating very old equipment.
Yeah, for operating cost in terms of like gas mileage and range. Oh yeah. I, I would, I would assume that maybe one of the challenges would be the training for new drivers because you're probably jumping, jumping up in a, in a, in a class size of license, going from a class four to a class three or two.
Yeah, that, that I'm not certain, but I can certainly find out.
Thank you. Appreciate that. Appreciate the information as well.
Any other comments, counselor?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Solz. Yeah, just a question when it comes to the bus fares. I know we had presentation from RMR and they're saying the, uh, the cash fare box, um, was creating a hurdle for, for tourists. Has there been talks with them about adding it to their season pass sales as a prompt after that to encourage more bus ridership up to the resort?
Two, two components. Getting on the bus, having a tummy or two loonies in your pocket, um, is a challenge. Moving on to a electronic K system is not yet something that we have been able to consider. I did, there is an upfront cost to do that. As far as season pass sales at the mountain, yes. They are offered when staff come onboard, they get that with their season pass. And that is why we see that huge number of season pass sales occurring in August and December. When staff.
Uh, yeah, but I'm talking about, uh, not for staff, but for other people buying their season's passes. If there's a prompt, um, afterwards to opt into buying a bus pass, that might encourage more residents to be using the bus and lessen the need for parking up at RMR.
Improve season pass sales.
Yeah.
Generally speaking. Thank you. Counsel problem? Yeah, it's an interesting thought. Could that be extended to like even a day pass, like a, a tiny fee that they integrate? So it might be a discussion between tourism rebelstoke and the hill. Is it, if all they had to do is show their pass? And, you know, it was already integrated and that would, uh, improve ridership, that would be good for the mountain too. It's then they don't have to deal with the parking extension. It might be a, a high value to them possibly.
And, uh, for instance, Mackenzie Village, that's provided season passes for each one of the units in their facility on a annual basis. So they buy season passes for all of their guests. All of the hotels are also, um, supposed to provide, uh, daily passes for their guests. They do not have money to drive. But it's that other gap beyond tourists that we need to continue to train and build. And that's going to be a challenge. But consistency, fleet size, being on time, all of those things add to that comfort level and confidence that you can get where you need to.
Counselor Chair.
Thanks for Solz. To, through the chair to director black. By chance, and I know it says in report that there isn't one, but I figured I'd tee you up here. Do we have an update from the province about the larger buses yet? And procurement of new ones?
Um, we have not received any news from the province at this time, and that probably is not a positive sign.
Okay. And then, uh, just a quick question. The slides I have that are posted online are a different color and there's one missing than what you presented today. So, uh, just at the end of the meeting, just want to make sure that everything is linked up and the same.
Can do.
Yes.
Thanks. Appreciate it.
Counselor Stapenhurst?
Yeah, just maybe one last question. In regards of increasing the service, is it my understanding, is my understanding correct that if we increase the, the service and the frequency of the bus, that that's going to trigger, um, additional development opportunities or, or density in, in current neighborhoods?
Um, I believe you're talking about the frequency of service to certain areas, which would then provincially reduce the number of parking stalls that are required. Um, and that number is 15 minutes?
15 minutes.
15 minute frequency and we're generally 30 minutes or more. So we're quite a ways away from, um, that, uh, number of trips. And, uh, I thi- I think that, uh, the planning group is, is working with, uh, reducing some of those, uh, onsite parking requirements for, uh, many of the projects in higher density, office street, forested.
Very definitely, yeah. Thank you. Appreciate that.
Any other comments for Mr. Black? Counselor, and then Counselor Chair.
Yeah, thanks. Through the, uh, chair, just seeking a little bit more detail on the new buses, uh, especially accessible buses, buses with more, more capacity. Can you elaborate on, uh, the response from the province? And when you're saying it's not looking good, does that mean like this three-year agreement this time here or is that permanent, like not looking good?
So we would have hoped that by this time, we would have had an announcement from BC Transit that our operating hours, which were part of that three-year expansion plan that was signed by the city in August, September last year, um, which included, uh, five new full-size coaches. I don't believe has been approved. That is all I'm saying. We have not received any formal notification of that. However, annually, this is a process that we go through for that, uh, procurement process with EC Transit and the allocation of funding hours from the province. So I'm not a hundred percent, I'm just indicating that we have not heard anything. Generally speaking, the province would probably be saying, hey, good news. And to date, we have not. I'd like to be able to report, uh, back in a week or so and see if there's any change to that. Of course, we'll come to you if that is a positive message.
Follow.
Yeah, just a follow-up because, uh, when we were not successful, uh, last, last year, uh, at the time, it was communicated that we were like just missed the cut, you know? So, uh, my presumption is the model is not that that bumps you up to the top, but we could potentially miss the cut again. Can you elaborate a little bit more? Because I think that's, you know, we're leaving people behind, people are not trusting taking the buses. If people with disabilities, accessibility things can't use the service, those are all key issues, uh, that we want to address here. And part of that solution is these new buses. So I'm wondering what, what is the next step? What is the step for council, uh, to take in, uh, you know, getting, getting the buses that are going to make this system work for everyone?
So regarding the, the, uh, community that did not get into the growth and extra hours last year. Yes, we were the, the top community that didn't get those improvements. Assuming that they were going to use the same process this year, we would have been in that group. To date, I do not know if any communities received expansion. I do not know whether they received any fleet. I know that procurement for, uh, buses is taking an extremely long time right now. So that's what I'm doing. If, when I know more, I'll be sure that you all know what's going on. As far as, uh, looking for options for fleet, I've asked our operator to start linking with our discussions with Coast Mountain or Transline to see if they've got some fleet that we might be able to, that they're pulling out a service that maybe we can acquire for relatively good prices. See if we can try and take care of ourselves. But until we have a financial, um, model that would undertake, and then we can see whether or not we can afford to do that with our.
Okay.
Counselor Chair and Counselor Paul, attention.
Thanks worship. Through to director black, I just want to piggyback Stapenhurst's question. Am I to understand that the frequency of the buses matters more than the amount of occupancy on the buses when it comes to, uh, provincial regulation or legislation for parking requirements on new development?
It's, it's the frequency of service, not the, 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 the number of seats.
That is wildly unfortunate then. We can't even, okay. Thanks for clarifying that.
Thank you. Counselor Paul.
Thank you, Mayor Solz. Just building off, uh, Counselor Orlando's, uh, questions. It would seem to me it might be prudent for the mayor to be contacting the ministry directly and find out where, where we're at.
I don't disagree, so we'll break those inroads and see if we can help Mr. Black and his department.
Thank you worship. And I'm relatively certain that, uh, our local rep from DC Transit is, is watching. And if not, they will be watching later. So they will get the message as quickly as possible. I did have a chat with them last week. They had no news at that time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Solz. Uh, yeah, I was just going to piggyback off, uh, comments as well. I think we want this, uh, bus service to also be servicing, uh, the community. The handy dart is not necessarily available to everybody that has mobility issues. So just making sure that we keep advocating for a fleet that will be accessible for, uh, for people because we don't want them to be, uh, left behind.
Counselor, any other comments for Mr. Black? Oh, Counselor Orlando, go ahead.
Yeah, I'm just, uh, based on the discussion and, and, uh, I did have some backgrounds, uh, background from, uh, Director Black's presentations at committee meetings about perhaps the, this bus issue not being a rebelstoke issue. It's maybe a provincial wide, uh, budget issue. Um, and yeah, I can't agree more with, uh, all of the counselors, especially with the focus on, uh, service for residents, maintaining that service, accessible service is something that I hear a lot from residents is that, you know, without, you know, they, they just want to go downtown. They don't want to get banged in the head by skis and snowboards, uh, and miss the bus on a powder day because it doesn't come. So, uh, that is a real thing. So, so my thought is to, uh, put forth something a bit more formal right now, just, uh, that we seek out that communication, that we formulate a question from BC Transit and we get a response and clarity from them on the situation. Because it seems like it's not just an incremental thing as last year, we just didn't quite make the cut. It seems like a systemic like bud- budget issue. And if this year that could also, when we don't get them, you know, in the years to come, that's something that I know, uh, is important to a lot of residents in the community for, you know, various reasons, especially using them in the summer. So is that something we can entertain to, uh, before there's a recommendation to, uh, council? That, um, the city, uh, uh, reach out to EC Transit for, uh, having a response on, for a response on, uh, the request.
Through you worship, um, I would be glad to come back in a month with an update from VC Transit and bring the VC Transit folks in if that would be beneficial to council.
So is that, is that resolution required or?
Well, you can make that resolution, Counselor Paul. Did you want to second it or you want to discuss?
Yeah, I, I, I agree, uh, in general with Counselor Orlando, uh, formalizing it. These minutes will be coming to the next council meeting, is that correct?
Correct.
And so we, we could do something on the fly right now, uh, through, through the mayor, we could do something on the fly right now or. Uh, and so we we could do something on the fly right now uh through through the mayor. We could do something on the fly right now or. Keep just that little bit of time and and have a motion maybe repaired. But that's council meeting.
Yeah, let's do that. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Black. Look and shake your tongue. Moving on to develop uh departmental updates, communications stats, Ms. Williams, welcome back.
Um. Is Mr. Lassau able to put the presentation on the screen?
Yes, I will. One moment, please.
The presentation, not the report?
Okay, one moment.
If necessary, I can do it without.
It comes. This is what you're looking for, Mr. Williams?
You betcha.
All right. You're up.
Hi, everyone. Um. So today I'm presenting a comparison report of the city of Rebel Stokes Communications from January twenty twenty three to December of twenty twenty four. And it may or may not come out how I want it to. Um. So today I'm going to go over our social media, our YouTube account, our city views newsletters, our website. And quick look at the brand timeline, um and then a quick look at what I've got planned for twenty twenty five. So kicking it off with social media. Um, yeah, a lot of this was covered in the eighteen month review, so I'm really only going to capture the points from uh Q three and Q four in twenty twenty four here. Um. But in Q four, we uh successfully linked the city's Instagram and Facebook accounts. Um, I mentioned that at the end of my last report that uh it prohibited us from having scheduling abilities, which was. A lot of time start time went. Into putting the posts instead of being able to just like sit down on a Monday and be able to schedule ahead of time. So so essentially, we've got those two linked, and that should be an issue going forward. Um, for in terms of analytics, for Facebook, we can see a net increase or or you can go to the next slide, please. There you go. Uh. So for Facebook, we can see a net increase of four hundred and thirty three followers in twenty twenty four compared to just two hundred and eighty six in twenty twenty five. An increase in engagement such as average shares per post rising from three point six percent per post, sorry, three point six per post to five point five. And an increase in reactions per post from seventeen point eight to twenty four point one. For Instagram, we can see an increase in engagement, including average shares rising from two point six eight to four point five nine per post. And an increase in post likes from thirteen point four three to seventeen point eight. So a lot of jargon there to simply say. Across the board, we can see that it's not quantity of posts, but high quality content that equals better engagement from our community. On the next slide, please. So for next, we're going to utilize our new scheduling ability and hopefully free up some of our time to focus on bigger. Or pressing priorities such as the website and build a plan with the city's linked in account. I think that could be utilized more. Um, particularly when we're trying to talk about being an employer of choice. Um. Over on YouTube on the next slide. So this is what we did when I last spoke to you. Uh, no real changes were made to our YouTube processes in Q three and Q four for twenty twenty four. Next slide, please. But overall, the number of videos created reduced from a hundred and four in twenty twenty three to sixty two in twenty twenty four. So. We essentially halved the number of videos that we shared, but the views and subscribers increased. People engage a lot more when uh the videos are about a hot topic in the community, such as the videos we shared about short term rentals and utility bills. Um. This is a really useful tool for expanding on discussions already happening within the community. Um. And then at the end of twenty twenty four, we utilized our YouTube account to share N S O S's announcement. This was a highly, highly watched video, and this just suggests that. A video platform is a successful way of sharing more delicate news going forward. Um. In twenty twenty five, next slide, please. Um, we'll test different destinations, primarily embedding the video and live stream links across our website. Next slide, please. For the city views e newsletters, again, no big changes were made for city views in Q three and Q four. We focused on brevity and linking the newsletter in more places externally, but really, we continue doing what we were doing because it's working now. Um, on the next slide, please. So with this, the open rate rose to sixty three point three percent from fifty six point five percent. The click rate rose to nearly eleven percent from ten percent, and the bounce rate reduced from zero point seven four percent. To uh one uh sorry, from one point nine three percent to zero point seven four percent. An additional a hundred and fifteen people subscribe to the e newsletter in twenty twenty four, bringing our total subscribers to five hundred and seventy two. Um. As mentioned, yeah, in my last presentation, uh, as you can see, that blue line is the government standard. Um, city views is well above the government's standard for e newsletters, and we intend to keep it that way. Um. So on the next slide, um, so next we're going to focus on a welcome email for new people signing up to the newsletters. Going to test different subject lines, and uh we're going to use anchor points to bring readers directly to the section that they're most interested in. I can see um emergency management and construction corner being hot topics uh again this year. And the next slide, please. And for the website, so at the end of Q four, we got budget approval and cleanse the website's menu layout and site map. I worked with almost all department directors to evaluate their webpages, asked what wasn't necessary, and meant what was incorrect, tidied information, so it's easier for users to digest the information. And work out ways together that we can enhance them further in twenty twenty five. Um, a lot of the planning work uh took place throughout twenty twenty four, but the bulk of the visual changes users can experience took place at the very end of December, just before uh. Um, the new year, therefore, the analytics on the next slide, please, um. Do not reflect the changes that we made. However, we can see the page for views per user is slowly increasing, which suggests that people are starting to spend more time reading the content. Um, I predict that will increase now that there's a lot more relevant information there and a lot less incorrect or false, as I. I've put it. Um. So over twenty twenty five, we'll work with Civic Plus to action the website redesign. And continue with the site map and page and document center plans. I mentioned last time there's seventy thousand documents in the document center, so. It's not going to be a quick fix, but it's in progress. Um. And then on the next page, please. So this is what I shared with you with the last presentation with the branding. Um. And then if you go into the next slide, please. This is where we're at now. So we made some good progress towards this project, but it is a big project and taking the time to get it raised important. Um, I acknowledge I originally set a very, very, very enthusiastic deadline, uh which is why I'm wary to put forward another one until all our ducks are in a row. Um, but I hope to be able to bring this uh to the committee of the whole before the summer, if not before. And the next slide, please. So as you know, I would have liked to have brought this presentation to you in January, but unfortunately, due to some personal circumstances, I was unable to. Um, however, now that I'm here in March twenty twenty five, I thought I'd give you a quick sneak peek of what's on the agenda this year and where we're at too with it. So um, we have had three staff members take the crisis communication course with the Justice Institute V C. Uh, we worked with Civic Plus to kickstart the redesign. We'll continue with the website plans. We'll finalize and publish the city's new brand book. We'll have a launch party for the brand book. We'll finalize the communications plan, which is in progress. We'll finalize the communications guidelines, which is a handbook for staff to use to avoid needing a middleman at multiple stages in one project, streamlining the communications approval process. Again, this is in progress. We'll finalize the crisis communication plan. We have one for internal emergency operations center use. And one with confidential and operational information omitted that we can share with the public. We'll update the outdated communications policy, which is from twenty ten. Um, we've run an internal communication survey to aid with forming the policy and guidelines, which is already drafted. We hope to run an external communication survey to understand improvements that can be made over the next five to ten years to aid the communication plan. And we're improving communications administration, both in the city's drives and in, as I mentioned, on the back end of the website. Um. Thank you for listening. It's nice to see all your faces again.
Thank you, Ms. Williams. That's uh a lot of work. Appreciate that. Uh, council, any comments or questions for Ms. Williams? Council.
Uh, thank you. Thanks for the presentation update. I appreciate that. Um, I have a question regarding uh Facebook. Uh, so you have the analytics there. It seems to me Facebook is constantly changing their algorithms. Some of it pretty annoying. Um, and so uh and one of those is for for some reason, Facebook is. Taking old posts and just throwing them out yeah at random. I don't know if you've noticed that, but including on the city page, it's something that's no longer relevant. And um, so I'm sure you're having to play games with the. A I, I guess. Um, but um. So I I get so it's just a a comment, and I'm not sure where, you know, where Facebook or the other social media is going, and uh if if that's a big challenge, it might be a sort of a general answer or not. Uh, the other probably more pertinent question is. The usefulness or not of uh council members or other members of the public, but there's some council members that will share. Facebook posts on uh various platforms. If you could just uh generally comment on the usefulness of of that. I think it's generally in those platform, in those communities, they're, I think they're appreciated, but I'm curious to hear from the staff perspective.
Um, as the father through the chat, um. Yes, social media seems to be changing their rules every week. Um. Additionally, to your comment, one of the things that I'm worried about at the moment is the Canadian News Act and not being able to share news via social media. Um, one instance of this was uh we had a crash on the highway. Four or so months ago. Um, I shared it from the, I made a post from the city's account, and it was revoked. Um. So this is another need for the crisis communication plan because we can't rely on social media solely anymore to get our information across. Um. That said, I I think it's a a good use of the council's cloud invisibility to share city content into. Other channels um and other community groups. Um, I'm working with the director of corporate services to. Formalize like the communications policy and the communications guidelines. I think that would help set um. Some useful perimeters around tone and language and and just clarify what is useful. Um. Yeah, and I I heard that out this year. Um. Yeah.
Yeah, good. Thank you. Any other comments or questions? Speaking of, thank you, Ms. Williams. Oh, councilor chair, my apologies.
Uh, no problem, worship. I just want to say uh thanks for the presentation. It's great to see you back in the office, even though I can't actually see you. Appreciate having you back.
Thank you.
Great. Thank you. We'll move on to development services, including bylaw statistics. Mr. Simon, Mr. Gibbs, will read it.
Hi, dear worship. We have no formal presentations as part of our own commitment to council for annual and quarterly reporting. So this is the annual. Twenty four, but you can see a variety of statistics, and you guys can expect to get something that's a little bit of a pared back version of this every quarter. So in April, you'll see a quarterly report. Things like total number of applications, total number of tickets issued, as we can expect on a quarterly basis. One thing I do just want to note on this report when it comes to application processing times, especially on the building permit side. Keep in mind, the way we calculate this, and it's an imperfect system, which is the best we can do, is the date from an application actually being paid. So there might be a few days back and forth with an applicant to make sure it's a complete application with our clerical team. And then to the date that the application is actually picked up, once the permit's been issued. Sometimes when we tell an applicant, hey, your permit's ready to pick up, it's issued, you just got to literally pay your building permit application fees. In a nutshell, they pay ten percent upfront, it's kind of a deposit, and they pay the other ninety percent when they come and pick it up. We might have a permit application sitting around for days or even weeks sometimes before they come to pay, so it does skew the numbers. And it's kind of the same thing on the planning application side. We don't always get complete applications, but we still calculate our processing times from the date that they paid. A planner might get a file and then in a week review it and say, hey, you're missing X, Y, and Z. We can't do anything with the file until you provide that. So it does skew these times. It's an imperfect system, so we're trying to give you an idea of. Eighty percent of the time, here's how quickly we're processing files, but then we still give you a hundred percent of the time. Reason why we're hitting that eighty percent, and I think it's important for you guys to really be mindful of that number. It gets rid of those outliers, those ones where someone lets a permit application sit for five months before they come and pick it up. The one where a planner says, hey, you're missing this on your drawing. They don't even know if you might need another variance for your application, and it takes them two months to get back to us. Right. So it really helps get rid of those outliers. That's it, right? One thing I have to say on it.
Any questions for Mr. Simon? Counselor Dylan?
Uh, just a quick question. It's probably unimportant. I'm just kind of a point of curiosity. On page seven of our little report here, there's a little ring graph in the bottom left corner. There's a pastel pink portion of that. It's a hundred and fifty three uh location of offenders, but there's no. Uh, guide for what that means. I'm just vaguely curious if that just unknown or?
Uh, through worship, councillor Devlin, I would actually defer Mr. Gibbs, and I do and I do want to commend Mr. Gibbs for. He's been working on getting a lot of these statistics, and it does take, it's a lot more time than you would think, especially given the fact that we don't have software now, so definitely. Question to him right now. It might have just been as simple as in Excel, it got.
Uh, yeah, just vaguely curious about it. I just, I didn't see you keep that. I'm just kind of wondering, but it's probably not super duper important.
Very tentative. Fair. It appears to me that it's just a color error on the pastel pink to the business listings is what it appears to me.
It could be that, yeah. That's. Yes, it appears that the data didn't transfer through on the actual. Purple versus a little bit of white.
Uh, maybe. I just don't have a thing for purple either. I've got Rebel Stoke, B C, Canadian resident, or U S resident, and there are five sections to the ring graph.
That was the uh, yes, you were correct. That was the unknown. It looks like the data got cut out there.
My nose.
That one, but yes, that is the unknown where uh a the data would, excuse me, the data wasn't able to be pulled from our system.
I I was incredibly furious, but thank you.
Counselor Chair.
Uh, to the chair, just a question to director Simon. I'm just scrolling back to it. Uh, the value on the number of permits between twenty twenty four and twenty twenty three seems to almost be cut in half. I'm wondering if you have uh any insight into that at all that you want to tell council.
Through worship, councillor Jerry, uh, Mr. Gibbs can correct me if I'm wrong, but in twenty twenty three, we had issued permits for Mackenzie Village, uh, starting their phase. Four, so they're doing phase four and five together, and I think we had two major building permits issued, and. This is a thing in a community where we have a few really large developers that are building at the scale of like hundreds of units at a time. It can skew these numbers. So whenever you see those numbers quite high, probably means either a really large multi-family building. Actually got to building permit stage, which is excellent, or maybe a big hotel actually got to building permit stage. So those are the ones we see that do skew the numbers.
Great.
Okay, I appreciate that. And then a follow up question is, um, what have you done to better the uh permitting? what have you done to better the permitting timelines, sorry, the building permit process times? Is this timeline reflection just a number of permits or value of permits or size and scale of permits? Or have you implemented anything to quicken the timeline?
Through your worship, Councillor Cherry, staff are always looking for continuous improvements within our processes. We've been working with our whole team, as we have had some new staff come on for the last twelve months now to look at our intake procedures, also looking at our outtake procedures so we don't have permit applications sitting around for weeks on end. We are right now in twenty twenty four, you can see there was a twenty-three percent reduction in commercial permits and in residential permits, and it went down about a week between twenty twenty four and twenty twenty three. So we are seeing the results of this, but a lot of it really does come down to getting staff more trained up, increasing capacity. Council endorsed this year a planning tech position to be permanent within the department, which has been with us since September twenty twenty three. So we are starting to see that bear fruit. A lot of it, to be completely transparent, does come down to more capacity within the department. That's the only way that we can get things moving that much faster. And also, a really important piece, Mr. Gibbs is currently working on this right now, I'd actually say two pieces. One of them is software implementation that we are going to be working through twenty twenty five on. And another piece is on the applicant side submitting a complete application. We get a lot of applications that are very incomplete. Building permit applications where they need variances, and we don't know until we're a week or two into reviewing because the individual applying didn't bother to review the zoning bylaw. Building permit applications where development permits are needed has been a really common one in twenty twenty three and twenty twenty four. So we get a week or two into the application, our planners take a look at it, and they say, hey, we can't issue your building permit until you apply for a development permit. And we're just seeing where people that are applying for these permits, they're just not doing their due diligence to be, again, fully transparent. So we're trying to put guides out there. We're trying to do pre-applications to get people in the know on what they need to submit. But this is a, this is something every municipality deals with, right? People always think the sooner I get the application in, the better. The sooner you get a complete application in, the better, and that's how you actually get your application expedited through the process. Being complete, reviewing the bylaws, becoming familiar with the requirements so that you're submitting everything that you need to submit. But yeah, we do hope this year, especially with software, that'll be a big one to help reduce these times.
Perfect.
Amazing. I appreciate that. You actually answered my third and fourth question, so I give my time to the floor.
Counselor Stickers?
Yeah, thank you. Through the chair to Mr. Gibbs. I have a question in regards to page seven, looking at the tickets per bylaw category. One of the things that we've heard throughout the community is in regards to parking and parking related issues. But looking like, looking at the categories here, traffic and highway, parking offenses, and then municipal parking slash camping. I was wondering if you could elaborate based on those two categories. I mean, it's a little bit hard to interpret what what are the offenses that we're seeing? Is it somebody parking a non-handicapped vehicle in a handicap zone? Or is the parking offenses people overnight camping, or is that falling under the municipal parks? I was wondering if you could elaborate on that for me, please.
Through the chair, absolutely, yes. So the traffic and highways portion, that is strictly any parking offenses. So any any offense issued under our traffic and highways bylaw would be any any parking infractions on a city road. When we're talking camping within municipal parks, that would fall under the municipal parks bylaw, and that's that they're they're staying overnight, they're camping on city property. The predominantly, the number, or the predominant number of offenses we see on their traffic and highways portion is park were prohibited, park obstructing snow removal, and park contrary to traffic control device. So that would be parking in an area where it says no parking, parking in area beyond the period of time here, the the two hour parking, you're spending four to six hours. But heavily, it is parking in areas where it is just strictly prohibited. Yellow curbs. We do have a few. We haven't seen too many where it's parking without a handicap parking pass, parking in one of those spots. We have a few of those though, but predominantly it is parking where prohibited.
Yeah, so I I mean, it's it's interesting because what I'm hearing from from community members in regards to, you know, like the the van camping that we're seeing throughout the community isn't being reflected in in the parking tickets. I mean, we're seeing tickets total for, of a total of five parking tickets, if I'm understanding this correctly. And then I'm also kind of kind of shocked to see such a low number, especially with R M R and their recent policy changes that do not allow for overnight parking in their parking lots anymore. And I think that's why we're seeing more vehicles parked overnight in in some of the the frequencies and and some of the complaints that we're hearing about, you know, the use of public areas and the impact that it's having on those. So hoping you can weigh in a little bit more on that.
Yeah, absolutely. So the the five strictly just, the 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 five tickets under the municipal parks, that is strictly just they are camping on, you know, in a parking, one of our parking lots in one of our city parks, and it's along those lines. We haven't seen a huge increase from the R M R and the new regulations they put in for their parking areas. Honestly, a lot of them have been moving over to the M O T I park or M O T T parking lot or pull out there on the highway. We haven't seen a huge spike in town. We have been trying to do proactive enforcement campaigns, going out there, educating people about them when we do find them. While we've been erring on the side of trying to educate people, being that this is really that first winter season of the changeover from R M R, so we didn't want to hit it too hard. So it was a bit more of that proactive education approach. I did pull up, to kind of clarify over there, I did pull up our list of from twenty twenty four, breaking down the specific offenses per parking tickets and just all of our tickets as a whole. So to give you an idea, we were two hundred and forty-seven park were prohibited and restricted. I'll give you the the high, high numbers, forty were parked at yellow curb, thirty-three were parked over twenty-four hours. And that was the bulk of those higher ones. The municipal parks were reside or camp overnight, and that's what those five specific tickets were for.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate it.
Any other comments or questions? So now we'll move on. Thank you, Mr. Simon, Mr. Gibbs. Appreciate that. We are done with the public portion of the meeting, so any questions from the press? I don't have that. I just have communications here, but Mr. Lindquist, you're here, and I just thought, yeah, a question before we go in camera.
I'm just happy I didn't walk in during any cameras.
All right, counsel, I'd like to move in camera, pursue the section ninety point one, A E K and L of the community charter. Moved by Councillor Dublin, Councillor Lucio, all in favor. Our show's carried. We'll take a few minute break, and then we'll come back.
I will have to.
Thanks, Councillor Dublin.